And as we return to open session, I am going to again serve notice that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair in accordance with Massachusetts general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone who is recording this meeting? If so, please identify yourself at this time. Okay, seeing none, the next item of business on our agenda is a public hearing on the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 615 feet of 20-inch plastic main in Hillside Terrace. We are joined this evening by Town Engineer JR Frye and Mary Mulrooney from National Grid. Welcome to you both. JR, I will perhaps turn it over to you, and if you could, if you and Mary could please walk the board through this agenda item, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. I don't have the petition directly in front of me. However, as I recall, Hillside Terrace is a short dead end off of West Street. National Grid is looking to replace existing main in that street, running out of West Street or connecting into West Street and running for about a little over 600 feet, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And Mary, perhaps at this point, if you could just give the board and the public an overview, add to what JR mentioned, and if you could please speak to the timing of when this work will be completed, if it's approved this evening?
Good evening. Yes, National Grid respectfully requests to install and maintain approximately 615 feet of 2-inch plastic main in Hillside Terrace from the existing 2-inch plastic main at the rear of 24 West Street to the end of the main around 29 Hillside Terrace. But it's all to replace old bare steel from the 1920s and then coated steel from 1963. So they just want to put in plastics so the system will be, you know, hopefully leak-free and there'll be no problems.
And National Grid has advanced this work to get it in ahead of our paving schedule. Hillside Terrace is scheduled to be paved next year.
Okay, so Mary, if this is approved this evening, when would you see the work being started? How long would it take?
Well, if the grant gets approved this evening, then it goes back into the office, and then a permit is applied for. And once the permit's issued, you know, weather permitting, National Grid will start as soon as they can.
And would you envision that you might want to try to complete this work during calendar year 2020?
If it became available, yes, I believe so.
Okay. And JR, I know typically we sort of set a date oftentimes where we don't allow any other utility or roadwork just because of the weather. It's been a little warmer this November. Do you have a line of sight as to when you might ask the utilities to stop doing work this fall?
As far as this particular work is concerned, because in order to accommodate our paving
JR, we're having a little trouble. We're having a little trouble hearing you.
We're having a lot of trouble.
Either that or there's some really fucking sound effect.
That does, there will, remember, the asphalt plants will shut down. Hold on one moment.
Thank you, JR. While we're waiting for JR, Bill or Joe, do you have any questions for Mary from National Grid?
So I did have a question. I think it's for both Mary as well as JR. JR sent a memo of November 6 that lists 17 conditions that would be associated with this work. Am I correct that National Grid is committing to follow and accept those conditions?
I do not have the conditions. However, the grant of location is permission to request a permit, so JR would have those conditions. And in order for a permit to be released from the town of Hingham, we would have to comply with the request and negotiate whatever is on it. But I'm sure he's already reviewed that with the engineer.
There are certain conditions, Mary, that we've been going through these last several grants of location.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, these are, I think, pretty standard.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Looking through them, I didn't see any that seemed significantly different.
And what are the costs to the town of this work?
The cost to the town is, there is no cost to the town. National Grid will, as they have done in the past, be paying a per foot main fee that has been standard practice. So there's some compensatory cost that the town accepts in lieu of them doing their finished paving work. And that's because we're going to be doing the paving the whole street.
Right. I guess what I'm asking is, does this show up as a budget item on any of the documents that we have for a budget?
No, it does not.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I've got no other questions.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
I can finish my, you, Mary, if you didn't catch it.
Oh, sure, JR. Yeah, we just had a question about, I believe the question was, how, at what point in time might the roads be closed for utility work, given that, you know, given the cold weather and the whole kind of, you know, just making...
As a general rule, the hard shutdown date is typically December 15. That's about when the asphalt plants close. Depending on where they stand with work, we may work with them to extend that if they need to, but they'll have to do most of their work on days that there's an asphalt plant open, which is, there's usually one or two plants open once or twice a week.
Thank you. And Bill, any questions for JR or for Mary?
No, I was going to follow up with that question, Mary. Thank you.
Okay. And I did see in the packet that the abutters have been notified. I don't have any further questions. Is there anyone in the public who has a question on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, Bill or Joe, I would take a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the petition of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 615 feet of 2-inch plastic main in Hillside Terrace from the existing 2-inch plastic main at the rear of number 24 West Street to the end of the main at number 29 Hillside Terrace, all of which to replace approximately 335 feet of 2-inch bare steel, 93 years old, and approximately 280 feet of 2-inch coated steel, 57 years old. Its approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated November 6, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Mary and JR, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
The next item of business is actually the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one set dated October 29, 2020, and one set of minutes dated November 10, 2020. I'm prepared to vote on both of these sets of minutes, if my colleagues are.
I've reviewed and I'm prepared to vote.
Same here.
Okay, I take motions.
I move to approve the minutes dated October 29, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I'd take a motion to approve the minutes dated November 10, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay. The next item of business on our agenda is our tax classification hearing. This is an annual hearing that is required, and I am delighted to welcome Erin Walsh, our assessor, to tonight's meeting. Erin served as the assistant to our recently retired assessor and has been an important part of our team. And I believe, Erin, I think you participated in last year's tax classification hearing.
Yes.
But this is the first time, and just before turning it over to Erin, we haven't seen Erin since the town successfully acquired and financed the water company. And I just want to acknowledge to my colleagues and to the public the very important role that Erin played in all of the discussions with the rating agencies. You know, they take a number of things into account when they're determining our bond rating, and certainly many questions about evaluations in town, et cetera. And Erin was brought into that very complicated process when she was pretty new on the job, and it was a seamless transition. And as I said, she was an important part of our finance team, and ultimately the town's success in having our AAA bond rating affirmed by all three rating agencies. So Erin, a belated thank you to that, and a welcome.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, you've prepared some information for the board, and I will turn it over to you to sort of tell us a little bit about what the purpose of this hearing is, what we're deciding, and also to share the recommendation of the independently elected Board of Assessors with respect to this vote tonight.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. So the purpose of the classification hearing is to decide whether to shift the burden tax between the property classes per Mass General Law 40-56. It doesn't change the total levy of the community. It simply determines the share to be borne by each class, residential versus commercial and industrial. So there was a special committee formed a few years back to analyze and review the benefits and the risks with adopting a split rate. The committee at that time recommended that the percentage of residential and commercial would need to be dramatically raised to consider a split rate. At that time, Hingham had approximately 11.3% commercial industrial properties. For fiscal 2021, the percentage is almost the same at 11.1%. So we did look at some estimates, and I'll try and share these. Are you able to see these?
Yes.
Yes, Erin, thank you.
So we looked at, if we shifted the rate 10%, so we looked actually at projected estimated effective property taxes by shifting the rate to commercial and industrial based on an average of an $800,000 assessment and our current tax rate of 1153. So a shift of 10% would only decrease the average residential taxes by about $113 annually and would raise the commercial rate by about $2,100 annually. And then a shift of 25%. Yeah. That would decrease the average residential taxes by about $291 annually and increase the average commercial taxes by about $5,340 annually. So we have had local business owners come in and express their gratitude towards the town for keeping the same tax rate. Many of the businesses, especially downtown, are smaller stores and would have difficulty paying a higher tax rate. Many of the local businesses contribute generously to our students by donating their various, donating to their various fundraising, which benefits many sports and theater programs. So we know that the year 2020 has been difficult in all of us, but we're especially concerned about the impact on the businesses in town. And the board feels like a split tax rate would only add more strain on the businesses and the commercial properties. So on October 30, the Board of Assessors met. They discussed and reviewed the classification issue and options, and a motion was made, and the vote was unanimous to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to leave it as a single rate for fiscal 2021.
Okay. Erin, thank you. And just for members of the public, who's on the Board of Assessors?
So Stuart Hall, Greg Hall, Stuart Greg Hall, and Al Chambers, and Chrissy Roberts.
Yep. And so I would just point out to members of the public that we actually elect our Board of Assessors every, these are three-year terms, and this is an independently elected body. I would just add, for the benefit of my colleagues and the public, that, you know, some communities have the same tax rate for businesses and for residential rates. Others have different rates. Another important consideration that the Board of Assessors looks at when looking at the tax rate is they also look at, they look at our commercial tax rate relative to other communities. And, you know, one of the things that, as we're looking as a community, we're looking at how to grow our revenue, because to the extent that we can grow our revenue, that is more tax dollars that are available for services. And in particular, as we look at commercial development, especially what we call low-impact commercial development, that is attractive to the town insofar as those tax dollars can work better, can work for us better in our community. And so another consideration is how our commercial tax rate, to what extent it makes Hingham an attractive place for a business to locate itself, as well as what Erin mentioned, which is the tax rate that also affords the great businesses that we have here in Hingham, the ability to continue to do business here and the desire. So, you know, a lot of different factors in this, but it always does strike me that, given that 89% of our tax base is residential, even a very small shift or a difference in a tax rate will save residential taxpayers a few dollars, but will cost our commercial property owners a heck of a lot more. So anyway, Joe, do you have any questions for Erin?
I don't. I think the presentation was thorough, and, you know, my discussion with property owners, discussions with restaurants that are struggling, I absolutely support the proposition of not changing the ratio.
Bill?
Yeah, so Erin, thanks for the presentation. And I would agree with the recommendation of Board of Assessors. I spoke with a lot of small business owners, and I know that this has been a very difficult year for them, and we're heading into even a very challenging winter season here for our small businesses in downtown. So I would agree with Joe that we keep the current rate, and hopefully going forward, we'll have some opportunities for more low-impact commercial development in some parts of town.
I would agree with my colleagues, both for the short term and the long term. This makes sense, and I appreciate the Board of Assessors looking at it every year to monitor if circumstances change and we may want to revisit anything. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment about this agenda item before the board takes a vote? Okay, seeing none, this is, Bill or Joe, I would take a motion. This is always a kind of an odd vote, the wording of it.
I would make a motion that the residential factor be set at 1 for FY '21.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Erin, thank you very much, and please extend our gratitude to Greg and to Al and to Chrissy, not just for their work on this, but for all the great work they do throughout the year.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of business on the agenda is a discussion of proposed MBTA, Hingham Ferry and Green Bush commuter rail service cuts. Joe, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Well, I'd like to tell you, I'm not muted, am I? I'd like to tell you that the T has changed its mind. It's going to keep the ferry service going and not cut off weekend and evening train service, but so far, the MBTA is showing no signs of changing its position. There were a couple of recent events that took place. There was a press conference yesterday with state legislators and town officials from various South Shore towns. It was held at the shipyard. I was one of the speakers, and we really emphasized the adverse impact of the MBTA's proposed cuts on Hingham residents, Hingham businesses, as well as all of the South Shore residents and businesses, that the proposed cuts would hurt economic development throughout the South Shore. It would slow the state's ability to recover from the pandemic, and it sends a signal that Massachusetts is really not committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which contribute to climate change, because this is a proposal that would result in more cars on the road. And the proposal by the MBTA would hurt Hingham's affordable housing infrastructure, which we've been working for over the years, and encouraging low-income residents to move with the promise of transportation. We've cited major low-income projects at the shipyard for that very reason, and now the ferry is going to be taken away. The press conference was very well-covered. It was picked up by Channels 4, 5, and 7, was on the radio at WATD 95.9, picked up in the Boston Globe, Patriot Ledger, Hingham Journal, and Commonwealth Magazine. So the message is getting out to the public as well as to the MBTA that there are real concerns with what's being proposed. Today, the South Shore Chamber of Commerce had a meeting with Joe, I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce his name right, Ayo, who's Chair of the MBTA Fiscal and Management Control Board. The meeting was attended by business leaders, town officials, and state legislators. It was absolutely an amazing discussion, including important contributions from Leslie Cohen, who is the Chief Operating Officer and Head of Asset Management for Samuelson Associates. Samuelson is one of the major developers at the shipyard, and she emphasized how central the ferry has been to capital projects at the shipyard. The chairman acknowledged that when you look at all the costs, all costs in, including operating costs and infrastructure costs, the ferry is actually one of the most cost-effective modes of transit. So there is an awakening that maybe these changes, proposed changes, deserve a second look. Today, following that, there was another meeting that our state representative, Joe Moschino, had organized with her task force on saving the ferry and Green Bush. One of the speakers there was Stacy Rubin from the Conservation Law Foundation. There were discussions about the Big Dig mitigation agreement, whether or not there are legal issues here, legal strategies that can be pursued to head off any cuts in Green Bush or ferry service. So there are two next steps that I'd like to emphasize to members of the public. First, on Thursday, which is two days from today, there is going to be a Ride the Ferry Day to demonstrate to the MBTA the importance of the ferry. There will be two ferries to be taken, the 7:45 a.m. ferry out of Hingham or the 7:30 a.m. ferry out of Hull. So it's 7:45 out of Hingham, 7:30 out of Hull. There'll be photographers there, people taking video, and it's all so that we can make a further presentation to the MBTA of the importance of the ferry and provide people's narratives of how important it is. So Ride the Ferry Day is on Thursday, and I will make sure that we have information about that posted at the town's website. The next important date is November 23. That's the date that the MBTA is going to be looking specifically at the South Shore. The MBTA has proposed cuts all along their various routes, North Shore, in Boston, South Shore. This discussion on the 23rd, which is at 6:00 p.m., is focused specifically on South Shore issues. And so I would encourage members of the general public to attend, and again, I'll make sure that information is posted on the town's website so that people are aware how they can participate and send in comments.
Yeah. And Joe, I know when I went into the MBTA site, I actually had to register to take part in that forging ahead meeting on Monday night. So I would encourage people to register for that.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. And Tom, I would ask if you or Michelle could make sure that you post the Board of Selectmen to that meeting. That way, we can all, we can all attend and participate as needed. Joe, thank you. Bill, any questions or comments for Joe?
Joe, I just wanted to, again, thank you for your advocacy. I know you put a lot of time in with this issue, and that's appreciated by many. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would second that. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment about the MBTA service cuts? Okay, seeing none, COVID-19 update, Tom?
Thank you, Mary. So the COVID-19 update for today, the 17th of November, as of yesterday, the Mass DPH is reporting 184,511 total confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts, of which 13,031 are in Plymouth County. As of Friday, Hingham remains in the green category for the second week in a row, with 449 total cases and an average daily incidence rate of 9.2 per 100,000 people over the prior 14 days. Our COVID-19 dashboard is now live on the town website and the COVID-19 Update Center. The dashboard consolidates state and Hingham Public School data into one visual that will update each Friday. Now, please remember that in accordance with the governor's most recent COVID-19 orders, everyone over the age of five must wear face masks in all public places, even when more than six feet apart. In addition, gatherings at private residences are restricted to 10 people indoors and 25 people outdoors, and they must end by 9:30 p.m. We'd like to remind everyone that special town meeting is coming up this Saturday, November 21, at 12:00 p.m. outdoors at Hingham High School. As they did in the spring, the governor's most recent COVID-19 orders provide an exception for municipal legislative bodies. We are taking as many COVID-19 precautions as possible so that we conduct a meeting, the meeting in a safe manner. These measures include holding the meeting outdoors, spacing chairs 10 feet apart, wearing masks and social distancing, having hand sanitizer stations available... wearing masks and social distancing, having hand sanitizer stations available throughout the venue, and cleaning microphones after each use. And I would add to that, that these are all the exact same measures that we took in, at the June town meeting, where we had zero transmission of, transmissions of COVID-19. Thank you. Turn it over to Michelle. I believe she has an update as well.
Thank you. So as Thanksgiving approaches next week, the Department of Public Health had published a recommendation on its website about higher and lower risk celebrations and activities. Their recommendations include the following. Avoid shaking hands and hugging. Wave and verbally greet others instead. Wear a mask when not eating or drinking. Avoid sharing food and drinks. Avoid singing, dancing, and shouting, because these activities increase chances of catching COVID-19 through the air. Wash your hands often with soap and water. Stay at least six feet apart from others. Avoid in-person gatherings with people at a higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19, such as older adults and people with certain medical conditions. And if gathering indoors, improve ventilation by opening windows and doors. As Tom mentioned, indoor gatherings at private residences are currently limited to 10 people. And we just want to ask everyone to please be safe and responsible this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom or Michelle?
Yes, Tom, what's the weather forecast for the town meeting?
Thank you for asking, Joe. Great question. Right now, the last I saw was 56 degrees and partly cloudy, or as I like to think of it, partly sunny.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's, let's not jinx it.
That's right.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question or comment with respect to the COVID-19 update? Okay, seeing none, public comment. The Board of Selectmen encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments. We have set aside up to 15 minutes at this point for public comment on items that fall under the purview of the Board and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please seek to be recognized. Once recognized, please state your name and address and address your comments to the Chair. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the Board of Selectmen. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and not indulgent personalities. And the public comment period is not a time for debate by the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen neither adopts or endorses any of the comments made at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports, Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Um?
Sorry, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Joe?
Nothing. I'm just going to ask, do we have a, a meeting scheduled prior to Thanksgiving?
Michelle, do we have any, any hearings that have been noticed?
I don't believe so for next week.
Yeah, I think we were trying to keep it open.
That's my understanding. So I did not want to miss then the chance to wish everyone an enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday.
Bill?
Good questions for Thanksgiving.
Okay. I had two things before we go into recess until 8 o'clock. Tomorrow night, I'm going to try to be in two places at one time, which even with Zoom is a little challenging. But as, as the Board's liaison to the Library Board of Trustees, tomorrow night is the scheduled meeting of the trustees. And so I will have a report out at our, at our next scheduled meeting as to, you know, any, any updates from the library. And also tomorrow night, the Cable Advisory Committee is meeting. They meet on a monthly basis. Harbor Media joins them. And I think I've mentioned in the past that the town is, the town is beginning the process of renewing its agreement with Harbor Media. And so I thought that it would be a good idea to attend one of the monthly Cable Advisory Committee meetings to just kind of listen to the conversation. So again, I will have a report out for the Board at one of our, one of our upcoming meetings. Tom is going to be instrumental in those negotiations. And he and I have already had some initial planning calls with members of the Cable Advisory Committee. And Tom has also had conversations with Harbor Media. So we are, we are laying the groundwork for what, what we hope will be a, a successful negotiation. So with that, we have a, one final agenda item, and this is actually a joint session with our colleagues on the Advisory Committee and School Committee that is beginning at 8 o'clock. And that is a discussion, it's an update of the FY21 Financial Management Plan. At this point, the Board is going to go into recess until 8 o'clock. Michelle or Heidi, I wondered if it would be possible to just put something up on the screen that indicates that the Board will be in recess until 8 o'clock. And then we'll come back at 8. We will come out of recess. We will give our colleagues on the other committees a chance to call to order, and we will take up our last item of business for the evening.
Mary?
Yes.
Before we go into recess, I have on my calendar that tomorrow is the Senior Center Appreciation Day. I don't know if that, if that has been rescheduled, or if there is anything going on that we or the town should be aware of.
Can I jump in?
You know, please, Michelle.
I believe it's been rescheduled, Joe, to early December. I can get you the exact date for that.
Great. Thank you.
Joe, sorry, I didn't report that out to you today. You asked me that yesterday. My apologies.
Michelle, if, if you could let the entire Board know, because we typically enjoy the opportunity to participate in that. So that would be helpful. Tom, procedurally, do we have to take a vote to go into recess?
No, you, no, right.
You, you would, you would just declare that we're going to take a recess until 8 o'clock.
Okay, I declare that we are going to take a recess until 8 o'clock, so we will see everyone then.
Thank you.
Oh, you should probably mute, mute your camera, your, your feed.
Michelle, is the audio coming through?
Yes, we can hear you, Mary.
Thank you. Okay, I have eight o'clock. The Board of Selectmen is resuming from executive session. Before asking my colleagues, chairs of the Advisory and School Committee to adjourn or reconvene, I would just make a notice, this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Section 30A, Chapter 20F, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting, could I please ask that you identify yourself at this time? Okay, seeing none, Carrie, do you need to call the School Committee to order?
Yes, thank you, Mary. I will call the School Committee to order at 8:01.
And Bob, do you need to call or call the Advisory Committee back to order or to order?
Mary, the Advisory Committee was called to order at 7:00 PM and recessed at 7:55, so we are reconvening to join this meeting.
Okay, and the Board of Selectmen is also coming out of recess at 8:02 PM. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. The item of business, the shared item of business on tonight's agenda is a fiscal year 21 financial management plan update. And welcome to our guests. You'll see that this evening, this is a joint session with the Board of Selectmen, with the Advisory Committee and the School Committee. Prior, before turning it over to Town Administrator Tom Mayo and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Paul Austin, we thought it would be a helpful idea to just set a little bit of context for what, what tonight's, what this agenda item is about, what we will be discussing and conversely, what we won't be discussing. So this is a quarterly update of the town's fiscal year 21 financial management plan. And by way of background, Michelle, if you could please advance the slide. Back in March, which feels like a very long time ago, the town concluded its annual budgeting process. And for those of you that are involved, this is a very diligent, very thorough process that involves hundreds of hours of town boards and town committees, town and school administration and staff, the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the School Committee. And in March, the Advisory Committee, who has the authority in the town to make budget recommendations for town meetings consideration, put forth a budget. And the table that you'd see on the screen are some highlights of that budget. It was basically a budget requesting about $110.5 million, which was a 6% increase over fiscal year 20. And you can see various line items of what the percentage growth was for different elements of the budget. About two weeks after the budget process was concluded, Michelle, if you could turn the page, a state of emergency was declared. And at that time, and for a period of several weeks, we worked very closely with our finance team to try to understand the financial impact of COVID-19. And at that time, there were many, many uncertainties, and there's still a lot of uncertainties today. But at that time, the town forecasted that we could see about a $3.3 million revenue deficit for the fiscal year, made up of reductions in state aid, reductions in property tax, basically some of our fellow residents not being able to pay their property taxes. We saw that restaurants were shutting down and thought that there would be some impact on our meals tax. And there are also a number of revenue items like motor vehicle excise tax and investment income, where we thought we might have some revenue shortfalls. Now, under Massachusetts general law, municipalities cannot deficit spend. We can't spend money, we can't, we can't, we can't deficit spend. Our revenues have to match or exceed expenditures, and the only exception to that is snow and ice. And so, back in May, we understood that we were most likely going to be facing a revenue shortfall. And municipalities all over Massachusetts were facing the same situation. And Michelle, if you could advance the slide, please. So we had a couple of options back in May. We could reduce the budgets. We could go in and say, we're going to open up all the budgets and we're going to cut them by $3.3 million, which would also mean cutting services. And many municipalities did that. The Town of Brookline furloughed 196 employees and they sent 300 reduction and force notices to teachers. Hanover furloughed 100 school and town employees. Rockland, Plymouth, Franklin, Framingham, and Randolph, to name a few. Also, at this point in time, opened up their budgets and reduced things. Across Massachusetts, 67 of the 350 communities reduced their school budget and 2,000 school employees lost their jobs back in May because other municipalities were facing this situation. Here in Hingham, we actually had another option. We had another option because of the strong financial management that has defined this town for so many years. We had something called a rainy day fund. And boy, it sure did feel like it was raining in March. And we said, rather than reducing the budgets and cutting services with no hope of getting them back during the year, what if we took some of our fund balance, our rainy day fund, to replace what we saw as temporary revenue losses? There was a lot of discussion at the time amongst the town boards, and the feeling was that this was a more, that this was a better path for the town to take. At the same time, we understood at that time that, you know, things could get better, but they could also get worse. And so we said, we can't just, we can't just plug this $3.3 million hole. We also have to prepare for the possibility that things could get worse. So a financial management plan was developed in May, and it was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the School Committee, that basically both allowed us to move ahead with our budgets, but also took into account the fact that things were still changing and evolving. Michelle, if you could turn to the slide, please. The financial management plan had three goals. We wanted to disrupt, we wanted to minimize disruption to municipal and school operations and services. We didn't want to cut services until we knew that we absolutely had to. We wanted to take into account that there would be some COVID-related expenditures. And at that time, we weren't really sure what sort of reimbursement programs were available. And we also wanted to preserve the town's longstanding practice of sound financial stewardship. As many people know, our town enjoys a AAA bond rating from all three rating agencies. And that both gives us access to the most attractive interest rates in the market, but also important, it gives us access to the capital markets. Back in 2008, the town was trying to build East School during the Great Recession. And at that point in time, people may remember that the credit markets were frozen. Hingham as a AAA community had access to the capital markets that other municipalities didn't. Without our AAA bond rating, we wouldn't have been able to build East School in 2008 because of the conditions. So that AAA bond rating is important for a number of, in a number of ways. In terms of this plan, what we essentially said was, let's fully fund all the 2021 budgets that were already vetted and approved by all the boards and committees. Let's not prematurely cut services. We'll use up to $3.3 million of unassigned fund balance. We will implement some expenditure controls and we'll establish a management process. Management process is actually what brings us here tonight. Michelle, the slide, please. I'm not going to read all the specifics of the expenditure controls, but essentially, since July 1st, we've been in what some people may have heard us refer to as Tier One. And Tier One essentially means that both, that across the Town of Hingham, every single department, that we would only make essential hires and make essential capital spending. And that's happened. We have also, as you'll see from Dr. Austin and Mr. Mayo, there have been some deferrals of capital investments and of some hiring. Because, because it was the discretion, that that was left to the discretion of the Town Administrator and the Superintendent. And the feeling was that while some, while some of these things were essential, others could be deferred. I would also point out that what, what part of this plan also spoke to is that if, at any point in time, our financial forecast said that we were going to be in a deficit that was greater than half a million dollars, there was a shared commitment that we would go into what we call Tier Two expenditure controls, which are basically more significant cost savings measures. You'll see in a moment, but we're pleased to report that after one quarter, that is not the case. And so, we, we are, we are in a good place through one quarter. Michelle, if you could just, this is just a copy, I'm not going to again read this, but back on May 11th, the School Committee, the 15-member Advisory Committee, and the three-member Board of Selectmen, so 25 of elected and appointed town officials all voted to adopt and to follow this management plan. And, and that's just a
And the Board of Selectmen is also coming out of recess at eight oh two P M. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. The item of business, the shared item of business on tonight's agenda is a fiscal year twenty one, financial management plan update, and welcome to our guests. You'll see that this evening, this is a joint session with the Board of Selectmen, with the Advisory Committee and the School Committee. Prior, before turning it over to Town Administrator Tom Mayo and Superintendent of Schools Dr. Paul Austin, we thought it would be a helpful idea to just set a little bit of context for what, what tonight's, what this agenda item is about, what we will be discussing, and conversely, what we won't be discussing. So this is a quarterly update of the town's fiscal year twenty one financial management plan. And by way of background, Michelle, if you could please advance the slide. Back in March, which feels like a very long time ago, the town concluded its annual budgeting process. And for those of you that are involved, this is a very diligent, very thorough process that involves hundreds of hours of town boards and town committees, town and school administration and staff, the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the School Committee. And in March, the Advisory Committee, who has the authority in the town to make budget recommendations for town meetings consideration, put forth a budget, and the table that you'd see on the screen are some highlights of that budget. It was basically a budget requesting about a hundred and ten point five million dollars, which was a six percent increase over fiscal year twenty. And you can see various line items of what the percentage growth was for different elements of the budget. About two weeks after the budget process was concluded, Michelle, if you could turn the page, a state of emergency was declared. And at that time, and for a period of several weeks, we worked very closely with our finance team to try to understand the financial impact of COVID nineteen. And at that time, there were many, many uncertainties, and there are still a lot of uncertainties today. But at that time, the town forecasted that we could see about a three point three million dollar revenue deficit for the fiscal year, made up of reductions in state aid, reductions in property tax, basically, some of our fellow residents not being able to pay their property taxes. We saw that restaurants were shutting down and thought that there would be some impact on our meals tax. And there are also a number of revenue items like motor vehicle excise tax and investment income, where we thought we might have some revenue shortfalls. Now, under Massachusetts general law, municipalities cannot deficit spend. We can't spend money, we can't, we can't, we can't deficit spend. Our revenues have to match or exceed expenditures, and the only exception to that is snow and ice. And so back in May, we understood that we were most likely going to be facing a revenue shortfall. And municipalities all over Massachusetts were facing the same situation. And Michelle, if you could advance the slide, please. So we had a couple of options back in May. We could reduce the budgets. We could go in and say, we're going to open up all the budgets, and we're going to cut them by three point three million dollars, which would also mean cutting services. And many municipalities did that. The town of Brookline furloughed one hundred ninety six employees, and they sent three hundred reduction and force notices to teachers. Hanover furloughed a hundred school and town employees. Rockland, Plymouth, Franklin, Framingham, and Randolph, to name a few. Also, at this point in time, opened up their budgets and reduced things. Across Massachusetts, sixty seven of the three hundred fifty communities reduced their school budget, and two thousand school employees lost their jobs back in May because other municipalities were facing this situation. Here in Hingham, we actually had another option. We had another option because of the strong financial management that has defined this town for so many years. We had something called a rainy day fund. And boy, it sure did feel like it was raining in March. And we said, rather than reducing the budgets and cutting services with no hope of getting them back during the year, what if we took some of our fund balance, our rainy day fund, to replace what we saw as temporary revenue losses? There was a lot of discussion at the time amongst the town boards, and the feeling was that this was a more, that this was a better path for the town to take. At the same time, we understood at that time that, you know, things could get better, but they could also get worse. And so we said, we can't just, we can't just plug this three point three million dollar hole. We also have to prepare for the possibility that things could get worse. So a financial management plan was developed in May, and it was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the School Committee that basically both allowed us to move ahead with our budgets, but also took into account the fact that things were still changing and evolving. Michelle, if you could turn to the slide, please. The financial management plan had three goals. We wanted to disrupt, we wanted to minimize disruption to municipal and school operations and services. We didn't want to cut services until we knew that we absolutely had to. We wanted to take into account that there would be some COVID-related expenditures. And at that time, we weren't really sure what sort of reimbursement programs were available. And we also wanted to preserve the town's longstanding practice of sound financial stewardship. As many people know, our town enjoys a triple A bond rating from all three rating agencies. And that both gives us access to the most attractive interest rates in the market. But also important, it gives us access to the capital markets. Back in two thousand eight, the town was trying to build East School during the Great Recession. And at that point in time, people may remember that the credit markets were frozen. Hingham as a triple A community had access to the capital markets that other municipalities didn't. Without our triple A bond rating, we wouldn't have been able to build East School in two thousand eight because of the conditions. So that triple A bond rating is important for a number of, in a number of ways. In terms of this plan, what we essentially said was, let's fully fund all the twenty twenty one budgets that were already vetted and approved by all the boards and committees. Let's not prematurely cut services. We'll use up to three point three million dollars of unassigned fund balance. We will implement some expenditure controls and will establish a management process. Management process is actually what brings us here tonight. Michelle, the slide, please. I'm not going to read all the specifics of the expenditure controls, but essentially, since July first, we've been in what some people may have heard us refer to as tier one. And tier one essentially means that both, that across the town of Hingham, every single department, that we would only make essential hires and make essential capital spending. And that's happened. We have also, as you'll see from Dr. Austin and Mr. Mayo, there have been some deferrals of capital investments and of some hiring because, because it was the discretion, that that was left to the discretion of the Town Administrator and the Superintendent. And the feeling was that while some, while some of these things were essential, others could be deferred. I would also point out that what, what part of this plan also spoke to is that if, at any point in time, our financial forecast said that we were going to be in a deficit that was greater than half a million dollars, there was a shared commitment that we would go into what we call tier two expenditure controls, which are basically more significant cost savings measures. You'll see in a moment, but we're pleased to report that after one quarter, that is not the case. And so we, we are, we are in a good place through one quarter. Michelle, if you could just, this is just a copy, I'm not going to again read this, but back on May eleventh, the School Committee, the fifteen-member Advisory Committee, and the three-member Board of Selectmen, so twenty five of elected and appointed town officials all voted to adopt and to follow this management plan. And, and that's just a copy of the language of the votes. So we're a quarter of the way through the fiscal year, and tonight, and what we're here to talk about tonight is a quarterly update on how we're doing for fiscal year twenty twenty one. I mentioned this last week. I know that we have a large number of people on the call, and we're glad everyone's here. Tonight, we are talking about the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty one. Specifically, what you're going to hear from Town Administrator Mayo and Superintendent Austin is you're going to hear about personnel actions that have been taken in the quarter, capital expenditures, other expenses, including COVID and COVID reimbursement, as well as additional sources of revenue. Town Administrator Mayo will begin with an overall look at total town finances. She will then give an update of the municipal tier one action plan. Dr. Austin will give an update on the tier one action plans within the School Department. Following that, we will open it up to questions from the Board of Selectmen, followed by the School Committee, followed by the Advisory Committee, and then we will open it up to questions and comments from members of the public. I'm going to ask my Board of Selectmen, Advisory and School Committee colleagues, if you could please hold off on your questions until the end of all of the presentations, because I think you may find that some of your questions will be answered. And both Mr. Mayo and Superintendent Austin just have a short, short presentations. So again, this is the first, first quarter of the fiscal year twenty one. It began on July first of twenty twenty, and it ended on September thirtieth of twenty twenty. So that's the timeframe that we're looking at. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Tom Mayo.
Thank you, Mary. Michelle is working at sharing our spreadsheet. Very good. Thank you very much, Michelle. If you could scroll to the top. Okay, everybody, Mary, you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, our Q one, our first quarter financial analysis shows that the town's financial picture appears positive or stable at this point in the fiscal year. That's good news. On the revenue side, if you look at the top of our monthly analysis spreadsheet, which is what's on the screen, we revised projections downward for meals, tax, and investment income based on trends to date. We have projected better-than-anticipated numbers for state aid, as Governor Baker has indicated that he intends to fully fund the FY twenty one municipal budgets, which is great news. Our analysis currently reflects a quarter of the expected full state aid revenue. So one-fourth of what we anticipated getting from state aid. Once the state approves, votes to approve its FY twenty one budget, we will update the analysis to reflect the full state aid amount. So if we drop onto expenditures. On the expenditure side, it is evident that our departments have adhered to the FY twenty one financial management plan and have exercised restraint when it comes to expenditures. Capital spending in quarter one was only four point four percent of the FY twenty one capital budget compared to twenty five point six percent in FY twenty. It is important to note that this won't necessarily result in savings on the year as capital funds will likely be spent later during the fiscal year, especially if these revenue trends continue. Spending by municipal departments, the schools, and the South Shore Country Club in the first quarter slowed compared with last year. Due to several existing vacancies on the municipal side, the analysis reflects a savings of approximately two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars in the municipal department's expenditure line. This is somewhat offset by COVID nineteen expenditures that we expect, that we expect to be reimbursed through the CARES Act. Drop down a little. So here, overall, the Q one financial analysis reflects a projected surplus of approximately one hundred eighty three thousand dollars, which means that tier two restrictions or measures are not triggered at this time. As Mary outlined, the FY twenty one financial management plan calls for us to provide updated action plans on a quarterly basis. And we shall now switch over to that. Okay. So for personnel, we currently have twenty one vacancies on the town side, which are equivalent to seventeen and a half full-time employees. Holding off on filling vacancies early in the fiscal year and scrutinizing operating and capital expenditures have been the main tools we've used to control spending thus far in FY twenty one. As for capital, we've spent ninety one thousand dollars of the total one point four million allocation in Q one. We have a significant amount of capital expenditures planned for Q two as we have several pieces of equipment that need to be in place before the winter. It's important to note that those expenditures will likely occur. They would have usually occurred in the, in the first quarter, they will likely occur in the second quarter. Again, like I said, we had, we wanted to get through the first, the first quarter and look at the revenues and that, and get a better understanding of what the reality is as we come out of Q one and then could decide to move on some of those capital items. So Michelle is opening a new table. I think many of you have seen the memo that was in the packet. This is the table from that memo that Michelle is bringing up on the screen. Great, thank you, Michelle. But in terms of COVID nineteen expenditures and reimbursement requests, we outlined that in the, in the memo to the boards, which is shown here. To date, the town has submitted a total of one million four hundred thirty eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty nine dollars in reimbursement requests to Plymouth County for CARES Act funding. At least three more reimbursement requests totaling another one and a half million dollars are planned before the end of the calendar year. The total CARES funding allocation for the town is three point six million dollars. Under the CARES Act expenses, under the CARES Act, expenses must be incurred by December thirtieth, twenty twenty, in order to be eligible for reimbursement. While, while incremental school and municipal COVID-related costs will approach or potentially exceed this three point six million dollar figure, many of those costs will not, will not all be incurred by December thirtieth. The municipal and school departments will all submit, will submit all eligible expenses through the end of the calendar year. And we are working with our legislative teams to try to extend, to try to both extend the CARES, the current CARES Act deadline beyond December thirtieth and to lobby for additional stimulus packages. And that has all occurred. We've heard from Congressman Lynch and our state, and our state and county representatives that that's all occurring. So at this point, Mary, I can turn it back to you or to Dr. Austin as you, as you see.
I think Dr. Austin. Thank you, Tom.
Welcome, Paul.
Before anybody yells at me and says, I'm unmuted, I'm unmuted, thank you. Everyone, nice to see you this evening. Thank you for having us on here, and thank you for the opportunity to, to give you an update on where we're at. And like my colleague, Mr. Mayo has said, the School Department is happy to also say that we have also adhered to the management plan that everyone agreed to back in May, and we're grateful for the town for support of our public schools to move forward. I will say, and I think that Tom just alluded to this as well, this incredibly fluid situation that we're in. This report that we gave you tonight is only through November thirtieth. So obviously, things are subject to change, most likely will, I think we all know that. But I am proud to say that our system has done our very best to manage our money well in our plan, and I'll have John Ferris in just a moment go over some of the, the charts that he created for, for you tonight. But suffice it to say, we've had, I think it's clearly known by everyone that the system has a substantial number of positions that have unfilled this year. And obviously, there is some savings to that. And on the other side of that, we have many COVID-related expenses that we needed to take care of to open our schools, and that continues to be quite fluid in the needs change and as the COVID conditions change. But I am very happy to say that our schools are open, and many districts around us are struggling to keep their schools open, even in a hybrid situation. So I'm very pleased for that, and I, and I hopefully will be able to continue to do that and as we move forward in this very difficult situation. So I will, John, if you want to, I don't know which chart, I think that Michelle probably has the charts that she knows you want to see. Oh, you're, I can't hear you, John. I know you didn't plan that.
How about that? Is it any better?
There you go, John. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Okay, but I can't hear you. Okay. Let's see. Sorry about that. Can someone talk?
Yeah, right now, John.
Okay, and you hear me, I hear you. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. It's just like, I've got, I've got about six different alternatives here, and it's, it's a combination of trying to get the speaker as well as the, as well as the microphone going. Anyways, Michelle, is it possible that I could navigate, share my screen? Or are you the only one that could share?
No, I need you a co-host. Go ahead.
Okay, so let me, let me see if I can. I'm going to, I'm going to start off and just share that same screen that we just saw from the town here. You know, the town screen, the combination, that didn't work right, did it? You're seeing, you're seeing ladder racks and maintenance trucks right now, right?
I see the tier one action plan in School Department, John.
Okay, good. All right. Good, I got a couple of screens going here, so bear with me. So now, is that blown up? And you can see that, you can see that pretty good here. And then we got the financial analysis plan that, that Tom went over here with the meals tax. Anything notable here? See, okay, so I just wanted to point out to everybody here. So you see the overspend here, you know, a lot of that's CARES expenditures, and I'll get into that. I'll show you where those incremental expenditures are on a separate chart in a couple of minutes. And so, you know, that's what's causing this negative here, and the bottom line of this is showing, ultimately, for the first quarter, the entire town, we're all in a positive situation. So the, let me go on to the school action plan now. So I wanted to go into this tab right here. And I mean, I think this note is very important because I think it's really important that everybody understand that while I may have deferrals through the course of the year or any given quarter, I really expect zero dollars to result in savings here, okay? Because they're not permanent deferrals. And what, some of these items, like for example textbooks, they are basically deferred, and we're not spending money on textbooks, but the money's going to be spent on alternate stuff such as technology. Okay, so instead of, instead of textbooks, you're getting online books. Energy and utilities, we have our buildings closed a couple of days a week, you know, shortened hours because we're not opening them on the weekend. So right now, I'm projecting a hundred thousand dollar variance in that positive, which is basically a savings. Now, that would be dependent upon the winter too, right? If we continue to have some moderate weather and stuff, that will hold up. You know, energy prices tend to be down. And, you know, while we have some contracts, those contracts may expire. So, you know, we would end up buying at spot for like, for oil or so, and that price could be down as well as for gasoline or so. An interesting thing here was special ed contract transportation. So because most of the, the state really is on some type of hybrid or reduced, you know, visits by, by students, actually, special ed transportation, I'm sort of projecting that to be down a little bit. This is contract transportation. We purchased a couple additional vans because we can no longer have multiple kids in a van. We have to limit that, so in a big van where we might have had eight, six kids, you know, we can carry three now if we're lucky. And then we actually bought, bought a couple of, or leased a couple of smaller single vans so that we can do some of the longer runs with our drivers as opposed to contractor, you know, savings to the overall district and the town. And then, you know, classroom supplies, the kids are reduced. And plus too, you know, because we're doing so much more with technology and online, we don't really need as many physical supplies and stuff. So, so when you look at it, I wanted to call to everybody's attention, you know, you know, because of the way we're operating, there are some savings. However, this note is a real important one, though. Even though those savings may develop in those line items, overall, the incremental spending that COVID is going to cost us in terms of, you know, additional transportation or PPE equipment and the, the additional expenditures in technology is going to be, far exceed any savings that the budget would come up with. So I think in a large part, we are really dependent on those CARES reimbursements that, you know, we do believe that we really will get. Taking a look at, you know, here's a picture of capital. So as we go through the capital, keep in mind, the School Department, we're similar to this, but after we got our capital allocation, the School Department actually prioritizes their capital maybe a little bit different. But this chart is good enough to, to give everybody a picture of the types of things that we do envision as like permanent deferrals. You know, for one thing here, this PRS security festival for eighty thousand dollars, that was incremental to some that we had carried over from the previous year to build that security festival at Plymouth River. But, so we had about a hundred and ten reserved for it. But the, the quotes, we went out to bid twice, and we came up like, you know, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's, that's sort of been deferred. So, you know, that could be available to subsidize some of the additional overspending.
John, excuse me just for a second, can you by any chance increase your screen size? Really hard to see. And it's late at night.
How's that? Is that getting any better? Is that too big?
Yeah.
Is it going off?
That's perfect.
This one?
Yes.
That looks good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, no, my pleasure. So we're looking at this last column here, folks, the G. So that's just showing you where the deferrals are. You know, clearly, in the environment that we're operating in, I don't need to refinish the stage this year. Do I need to refinish the stage? Absolutely. Should I do it this year? Probably not. So these are the types of things we're going to defer. And those would be permanent deferrals, but they will in fact be, you know, this money will be spent on other things that we need to make our business, to make the school operations run in this COVID environment here. The security wall between the doors of the LMC, at the cell school and the office, that would be a second set of security doors. So, you know, that's a project that I still want to do, but we'll defer it. And this was like for carpeting, where we had a habit of, not a habit, a practice, because every seven years or so, you have to change out the carpets in the rooms, more than seven years. We have it on a, on a plan so that every year we're changing out, you know, a number of carpets in the elementary rooms. So they constantly get cycled over probably in two or three years. So because of, we're operating at six feet distance and really nothing in the room, you know, we wouldn't have that type of expense. Basic instructional equipment. Now, here's a little misnomer, right? So I saw this, I had put this number down. And then just with this week, I, you know, we know that we need to get some additional furniture, you know, desks and chairs for kindergarten, you know, and that's a cost of seven thousand dollars. So I had reduced the number, but there's going to be an ebb and flow in all of this. So none of these numbers, I just wanted to kind of show people the thinking behind, you know, what it is that's deferred. The shield cameras for the bus, and we were able to buy those from the payroll detail account that had excess balance in it. So, you know, we don't need to spend that in capital. So, you know, roughly a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars are things that be, in some sense, permanent capital deferments for this year. But the money will, in fact, like everything else, this probably should have been yellow, will be spent on other items. Okay, so. Oh, is this the same one?
Same one, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, was that the first quarter? Maybe it was the first, that's, that was the first quarter one, right? Yeah, okay, that was it really went. Okay, so.
You're going to make it bigger again, please.
Yep, I'm going to actually move from this one now, Paul, because so that's the, that's how the school fits into this overall financial management plan. Michelle, did I miss anything that I should have talked about on these sheets? Because I'm going to go to my sheets if we, so my sheets are going to read, the, the School Department sheets will relate to these sheets, but I just wanted to sort of point out to you here of, you know, we have the items that you'll see on the supplement, supplemental sheets that I show you relate to this overall financial management plan. Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing that, and I'm going to share another one here. Okay. I'm going to, let me, I'm gonna go to my forecast first. So let's see, is that? Do you, am I sharing again? No, I'm not sharing yet.
Yeah, John. Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Okay, now I think I'm sharing again.
You are.
And I defer, let me see if I can make stuff bigger. Oh, here we go.
That's fine.
I'll put this one down. So are you, you seeing my, my forecast right now?
Yes, we got it.
Okay, good. Thank you. And so people can see this one? So let me, let me take this. So this is a, we would, I would typically do a forecast, but this is as of November 3rd, sort of our numbers. I would typically do this much later because what, what I really don't have yet is like great visibility for what school operations are like. But, you know, I wanted to be able to provide, you know, some perspective to everybody of how the, the school budget is actually going at this point. So keep in mind, you know, it's a forecast, this is a forecast saying, hey, if June 30th were come tomorrow, where would I be? Okay, so not only do I have expenditures here, but I have encumbered in, encumbered expenditures in there and those other types of expenses that I think will incur, with many of which will come from the supplemental schedule that I show you after this, which is sort of my incremental COVID expenditures.
John, can you move your cursor off? There you go, because it blocks the money.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
So scrolling down to the bottom, so this is all typical school budget fashion, all headings that many people in the community and the advisory and the selectmen are all familiar with. It's basically a, a front cover sheet. I'll scroll down to the bottom here and you see that, you know, right now, the operating budget is negative, you know, sixteen ninety four, eight thirty one. Out of that, you know, the hundred and eighty three thousand from capital that's, that I'm projecting to be deferred is doing somewhat, something to offset that somewhat. So, you know, when you look at the total, the total net deficit right now for the school department, based on a forecast, I'm looking at about one point five million dollars. The other important thing to think is to see that there's two, couple of filings, three filings that the school department has made already for COVID reimbursement. And those amount to really one million, three hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. This reimbursement would be, be deducted from the overall negative. So when you look at the school budget at this point in time, you know, you were saying, hey, I'm, I'm negative three hundred thousand dollars. That's not a bad number considering we're talking about a sixty million dollar budget. Okay, so you know, this is well within a management range for, for us. If this was, if this was sitting in May right now, I tell you, I'm gonna make this, folks, there's no problem whatsoever, okay? Because it's not that much. And you know, there's ways that we can kind of start them, you know, squeezing things so we could actually come into zero. Let me tell you what, show you what some of the drivers are. We have this driver here, the teaching, you see a negative seven ninety nine. That's really, the big driver in there is the lost revenue from the full day K program, right? We had, in our budget, we had nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in full day K tuition to offset teaching expenses. We're not running a full day program and therefore we know we're losing the nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Why isn't it nine eighty? That's because there's been some churn, there's people on, you know, leaves of absence, covered by subs. And then, you know, typically if, if all of a sudden somebody leaves and we need to cover, somebody might take us a couple of weeks and we're doing a day sub, which was less expensive. So when you're looking at the volume of people that we manage, you know, weeks and, and several weeks can add up to some big dollars. So that's why you're not seeing nine eighty there, but you would. You know, this was textbooks, I showed you textbooks in the other one, right? So we're not buying textbooks, really, we, we have to buy some, of course, but we didn't have to buy what our budget would be of the four forty eight. So there's actually some savings. And I call them austerity measures, but that doesn't mean we're not providing things that we need to provide. Those things alternatively are really being provided by this number, the technology spend, right? We're up that, you know, one point one million dollars. That's for, you know, laptops for everybody, that's for additional Chromebooks for students, it's for iPads, it's for, it's for licenses, licensing technology to make, you know, online platforms readily available to students as well as to teachers so that they can teach. This one here, this negative here, you see that's transportation. So we just leased five new buses because we're getting ready to get more students back more frequently. So those buses will be delivered to us sometime early December and stuff, and we have a short term lease. So that's sort of what's driving this up. Plus two, in the forecast, the projection, we were looking at buses. The bus drivers typically, they would do like a five and a half to a six hour day. Now they're doing like more like an eight hour day because we're running buses more frequently because we're doing more tiers. Okay, from, from the way we're operating. Because now, instead of having up to seventy seven on a bus, even though we never had seventy seven, you know, we can only have twenty five people on a bus. So we have our buses constantly engaged throughout the day, so there's a couple of extra hours. So that's why you see some negative balance there. Athletics, you think about athletics, we have some reduced activity. I don't see big spending, there's some programs that have actually been postponed from the fall. You know, whether we'll have another section or not, I don't know. So you're gonna see some savings in terms of, you know, detail, details, ice time. You know, coaches that we're not paying and stuff. And the same would happen with other student activities. I'm not, I'm just not gonna go over all of them, folks, because I don't want to bore you to death, but I just give you the, the big ones. So this is, you know, the three fifty two here, that's our inability to get people and sort of the, the delay for custodians. If that's a lot of also custodian supplies sort of going into other, in, into, into maintenance or so, you know, into this place here. COVID, COVID related types of expenditures and stuff. So yeah, that's a, a combination. So you see a gain there, right? Heating of buildings, I talked about that, you know, the buildings are shut down on weekends. We still operating, even though we, on a reduced day, we're operating the buildings for an extended period of time to make sure that air quality and everything else in the building stays safe and helpful for, you know, the students as well as the staffs. But we're not operating on weekends, so that really is the impact of the weekend. This seven forty nine, that's the COVID PPE disinfecting cleaning, you name it. I mean, you know, we've got tons of things going on daily. We have cleanings in between classes, you know, at the high school and the middle school. You know, fortunately, at the elementaries, the kids stay in the same class all day, so that's not as, that's not necessary, we clean afterwards. But, and, and this continues to grow, right? Because whenever we need something, it's okay, yeah, but we're gonna get it. We want to make sure that people stay self, safe and healthy and that everybody is as comfortable as possible. Taking a look at this, this is, we, as many of you are aware, we had the traces program. You know, and he had to get a place at Libby Industrial Park in Weymouth in order to have that last year, that continues this year. In addition to that, there's a piece in here that has to do with the, the, our desire, the school department's discussions. We're trying to rent additional school space. And so this three oh six is sort of making the space ready. Sorry for the little typo there, probably should have got an A in there, but I missed it, sorry. Sped instruction, so here's a delay in grant approvals, right? So this isn't necessarily, we sort of had the budget, it's not like there's more special education teachers out there, but we have delay in the budget. So the, the grants actually were getting charged to the budget. So some of that will partially reverse because the grants are now approved and we'll start charging some of those off. So that one there should probably come in, you know, pretty even, I would say. This was an accounting error that was up above, there's just sort of like a mix of, of counts that was showing up above and, and positive, but it really would have belonged down here. So that would have offset that. And the special ed transportation I talked about because the, the, the other schools, the out of district schools are in hybrid fashion. So you go in a couple of days for a kid, they're not going every single day of the week. So that is causing, that's causing some benefit to the, to the overall district. And this thousand, so the grants, grants now, federal grants is really two year grants. So to the extent that you didn't use one up last year, you get to use it this year. So that ninety thousand is really the impact of the use of, of last year's grant. And then we talked about, I talked before about the delays in the capital projects. So you're seeing those positives. So when you add all these pluses and minuses up, that's how you end up getting this number. That's a quick and dirty on the forecast, and now let me just show you the supplemental schedule that goes along with that. And then, then we can certainly open it up for questions, I think, Paul.
That's fine.
Let's see, so let me share this one now. Okay, I think, share a screen. Okay. How's the size of that? Do we see?
Use a little bit bigger would be nice, John.
Let's see what we can do.
There you go.
Is that a little better?
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't know, the micro, the, the little magnifying glass is not here, so, all right. So you, you know, whether you call these school reopening costs or incremental costs to the school, whatever you want to call them. Over here, I've got them categorized, so these are revenue losses up here. These would be personnel type things, maintenance things or PPE cleaning type things, technology spend, the impacts of, you know, for transportation, this would be for rents. And, you know, this would be for, like, so I know here, I don't have anything in here for compensatory services. But, you know, eventually, we will figure out what those are and probably make some type of accounting for those. So let me just start at the top here. So the lost revenues, I talked about the full day K, Kids in Action, Kids in Action was our school wraparound program. You know, we were able to take kids before school and after schools to benefit parents. That was a profitable program, a great program for residents then because it provided, you know, a very cost effective and extremely competitive way of having people get wraparound service for the schools. And that program was doing well such that we were able to offset the operating budget by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year, you know, through that operating program. So when you think about that, just think if it was a daycare program, they would have their own expenses for their building, they have to rent for their transportation and for all the other services, such as their payroll and their accounting and stuff like that. So that one seventy is really an offset to our budget where we offset administration, we offset. They, they basically had use of a bus for the most part because we would transport the kids between the different locations before and after, so they got to school. So that we used to allocate sixty thousand dollars for a bus for that. And then the spaces that they use in terms of the heat and the cafeteria and the rent and those types of factors. You know, we, we had a, a price tag of about a hundred and seventy from their profitable operations. So, and, you know, in context, if they were, you know, running at about eight hundred thousand dollars a year and their expenses were six hundred thousand or six thirty, that one seventy was the profit above where, where they were so that you could constantly, you know, rely on that one seventy coming in year after year. We're not running Kids in Action this year and last year, the, the corpus that was there got decimated. And this year it won't fare any better. So but, so we're losing that revenue. And this was middle school activity fees, we always collected sixty thousand dollars to offset some of the activity fees. I know we have some activities going on, but we're not collecting fees for any of the activities. So there's, there's a revenue loss there. The, this, these teachers here, I had this here too, because as we started planning, we started thinking of all these different variations of how we might be able to get kids, you know, take care of more and more kids. You know, this would be if we got them at three feet and if we could fit them in the buildings, but we, we know we can't fit them in the building. So the sheet was being set up so that I could constantly track the incremental expenditures. Or costs, let's call them costs, because, you know, whether it's a revenue loss, that's a cost, or whether it's something I spend is, is, is a, is a cost. We're moving towards this para remote teachers, we're gonna have a remote teacher for each grade. And this is, this says pro rate here basically because I'm looking at a hundred and twenty two days now, right? Because we're not there yet. So instead of me, you know, having a teacher for a hundred and eighty days, I got a teacher for a hundred and twenty two days. That's what I would have estimated at this point. Now, when we finally get the teachers on and get them in the position as a hundred and twenty two days, I don't know, but it's probably not more. So it would be less than a hundred and twenty two, that cost might come down. But I just want to kind of, I tell you that because I want to give you an idea of how I go about thinking about how I'm gonna estimate these expenditures. Okay, I don't do much off the hip, everything has some type of calculation because I want to have a rational way of trying to communicate and figure out what number, you know, what should this number be? So this is for the, you know, when we were moving towards trying to get more kids in, we'll have these remote teachers taking all the remotes so the teachers can spend more in person time with, with the kids. And, you know, this is the ultimate cost of it. When you look over at this column, I'm separating these costs by, you know, what we're gonna incur by December thirtieth, in my estimate, of course, and what will incur after in twenty twenty one. And I do that because when we get down to the bottom here, this column is not going to be reimbursable from what we know right now. This cost may be reimbursable. And I say may because, you know, we'll get our reimbursements from Plymouth County. A lot of these are gonna end up being payroll items and, you know, I don't have a lot of experience. We, we know that the first submission that we made of some six hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, most of that is covered. I mean, we only lost a few thousand dollars, but none of it was payroll. So we're, we're formulating one large payroll right now so that we can submit that. And then I expect we'll get lots of questions and we'll figure out, you know, what is it that they're really gonna go into cover? I mean, my thought is they should be covering the remote teachers because they're COVID related. You know, we have this other here, this transportation regular ed, if my bus driver is going six hours to eight hours a day, they should cover the, that personnel aspect. If I had two more vans and I got these drivers, they should cover that. If I have these monitors for the bus, they should be covering that. You know, if I have cleaners for custodians, they should cover that. So, but I'm breaking those out, so you see here, this is the estimated amount I'll expend from December thirtieth, and this is the amount that I'm gonna spend from twenty twenty one. Now, if we get something.
John, I just, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, I know we've been, I, I didn't anticipate we were going through as much detail. Is there any, I just want to make sure that we got enough time tonight, I'm really cognizant of the time.
Yep.
And, and kind of putting this into perspective for that, we went into a lot of detail for folks. If we can get down to kind of where we are, this is all matching what you already, what we've put out, so.
Yep.
See if we can kind of wrap this up so we can get the questions in.
One minute.
Thank you.
I, I'll do the Evelyn Woods version right here. So, so you, you know, the context and the way this spreadsheet is basically set up. So from there, you see the technology, let's shoot down to the very bottom, okay? This is my total incremental cost that I see, the four million nine, all right? This is the lost revenue that I don't expect we would be able to recover anyways. This, so this would be the incremental cost net of the revenue losses, right? So, okay, we got about three point seven, so, you know, that and, and COVID, the Kira's access, we get about three point six. But this is my post-December thirtieth amount, one three. So what I see is I probably could possibly estimate the reimbursements if, if everything stopped today and I knew all my expenditures as of today, which I'm telling you these will change, I could possibly recover up to two point three million dollars in COVID reimbursements from Kira's act. So what I filed for right now is thirteen eighty eight, that thirteen eighty eight is reflected in my forecast, which shows just three hundred. If, if we went up to this two, three, that's another million dollars, that negates the three hundred and true somewhat of a positive six hundred thousand. I don't believe that's gonna happen, but that's what this ultimately means. So I'm happy to, I think I'll end there, I'm happy to ask questions if anybody, you know, answer questions.
Thank you. Michelle, could you just maybe flip it back? I'm gonna try to take thirty seconds to summarize all the detail that everybody's heard since the beginning of this meeting before we open it up for questions and comments. And what I hope that members of the public who are joining us tonight, take away from the presentations you've just heard, is that, is that all of us understand the fiscal responsibility that we have, both in terms of providing all of you with services and also our fiduciary responsibility. We all take that responsibility very seriously. And as you also see from all the detail that you've seen, we also are really tracking our expenses and our revenue in great detail Because we know that's important. So kind of where are we at the end of the first quarter? So we've got three pieces of good news. First of all, state aid. We thought state aid would be cut by $2 million. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. That's good news. Our expenditure controls are working. We're getting reimbursed for COVID-related expenses through the end of the year. And we think that's going to be about 2 and 1/2 to 3 million dollars. We have three things that we're going to be keeping an eye on. So far, property tax revenue collections have not dropped off. But we need to see how that goes. We're particularly mindful of what's going to happen after the beginning of the year. Because Hingham tends, Hingham's property taxes, when, when we've had collection issues, they've tended to sometimes lag a little bit. We want to keep our eye on motor vehicle excise tax that generates about $4 million in revenue to the town. And we collect most of that in January. So we need to see how that goes. And another really big question mark that I think you've heard both, both Tom Mayo and Dr. Austin and John Ferris talk about are COVID reimbursements. Right now, COVID reimbursements end on December 30th. We know as a town that we're going to have COVID expenses in calendar year 2021. Without an extension of what we have or any new federal money, that's going to be challenging for us. However, I would point out that the good news on state aid is, is a good thing. That may help insulate us from that potential. We have a couple of things that aren't going so well so far. Meals tax revenue, that won't come as a surprise to anybody. Meals tax revenue is down. And we know that as we approach the winter, that will probably drop even further. Investment income is down because interest rates are so low. And as John mentioned, we have lost school fee revenue. And the, the way the CARES Act is structured, we don't have the ability to get reimbursed for that. So the good news through one quarter is that our plan is working. Our town finances are solid. We have deferred some expenses and capital, but we've also made investments. We need to keep an eye on what we know is going to be a changing and evolving financial situation. This could look very different next month. It could look very different next quarter. But again, for members of the public, I hope you see that we are paying very close attention to that. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues on the board, Joe Fisher and Bill Ramsey. If either of you have any questions or comments with respect to the first quarter review.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you to the presenters. It was exceptionally helpful. This is a question, it's not just for Tom. I think it's both municipal and school. And it goes to the COVID reimbursements, which I'm, I'm not sure I understood. As I understand it, that the town is eligible for 3.6 million in COVID reimbursements through the end of December. And I'm hearing that we're only going to be putting in something like 2.5 to 3 million. And I, I'm not understanding why we would not be submitting for the full 3.6 million to which the town is entitled.
Do you want me to take that, Mary?
Yeah, Tom, I would, please.
Thank you, Joe, for the question. Yeah, so as we know, COVID reimbursements are restricted. They're not, it's not a blanket ask for money and get it. You have the, there are, there are categories for which the money has been made available. And throughout the, the fiscal year, both the school department and the municipal side have expenses that we incurred during the course of the, of the, of the year. And a lot of those expenses are personnel and otherwise. And they, they are incurred throughout the whole year. What this, what the CARES Act is telling us is that we cannot put in for expenses that we incur beyond December 30th. The fiscal year goes through the end of June. So we're going to have six months, as of right now anyway, of, of expenses that we expect to incur that are not reimbursable, but they can't be, and they, they can't, they won't be incurred by December 30th. So what we're telling you is we're looking at all of our, there's only so much PPE, for instance, you can buy. But there's, but there is that there are a lot of personnel costs that happen throughout the course of the year. So both Dr. Austin's team and Michelle and I and Sue have done our analysis of, of the expenses we expect to be able to incur and, and put in for reimbursements for through December 30th. And that's totally something around, I think, was it 25 or 3? It was in that ballpark. Michelle, you might have a better number.
Yeah. So Joe, we won't, we won't necessarily have 3.6 in eligible expenses. But we are scrutinizing all the expenses and submitting everything that's possible.
And I do that real quick, Mary, you know, from the school side, since you asked the school side as well, you know, I'm incredibly proud of the work that the John Ferris and his team has done in the business office, because every single expenditure that we have is tagged and looked at as far as a COVID expense. So as Tom says, we can't go by that December 31 mark. However, everything up until then, we're going to, we're not going to leave any stone unturned to be able to try to recoup any of those funds that we could potentially get.
So am I correct, Tom, that the COVID reimbursement covers operating, certain operating issues as well as certain purchases? Whether it's a capital item or, or just a disposable item? So there's, so with respect to sort of the operating costs, I understand the restriction, but I, I just don't understand why we would not be purchasing in advance physical items so that we could claim it for the, by the December 30th deadline.
So we, we are planning to do that to the extent we can. You know, I talked to the, the fire department, for instance, and, you know, the closets are full. We're, we're, we're stocking up on the supplies that we need and the purchases that we need to make in order to, to get as far as we can with this CARES Act money.
But I, I get it. I'll open up my closet because I think we just need to use it. I mean, and let me ask, what, what happens to the money that's, it's, suppose we put in for 3 million, we're entitled to 3.6. What happens to that 600,000?
So a couple of answers to that. One is, we're hoping that the extent that the, the deadline is extended. We're hearing that that's a good possibility. That's one. And if that happens, then this problem goes away. Two is, the, the county is telling us that they would take that remaining dollars unspent by every community, which they're expecting every community to have unspent dollars. And reallocate them through other parts of the CARES program. As they can.
So, so am I correct that that's six, in my example, the 600,000 would not be made available to the town of Hingham?
If the deadline is extended, it would be.
No, no, if the deadline's not.
Yep. So if the deadline is not extended, my understanding, and they don't, and, and we can't expend those funds before the 30th. Then they would roll back to the federal government.
Okay, just one other question. I'm sorry.
Joe, I would just add that on capital, we are both looking at capital purchases that would be eligible and other things we can do. For example, I think that there've been technology purchase for, for students and teachers in excess of a million dollars. Now, part of the issue here is that you have to actually have everything fulfilled by December 30th. So, you know, some of it also has to do with supply. We've ordered some things for IT that would be eligible for reimbursement. So we are looking at both operating expenses and capital for anything possible. We're trying to bring every one of those dollars possible into Hingham.
Yep. And you brought up supply. I'm just going to ask one more question. Are, is the town experiencing problems with obtaining PPP? Or is the supply readily available and are we experiencing price gouging with respect to the PPP?
So, no, the, early on, PP was difficult to obtain, a lot of it. Those problems have, for the most part, been resolved. And, no, there's, there's, I'm not, I'm not seeing any price gouging.
Same for us.
Yep. I will yield the floor. Thank you.
Bill?
Hi, I'm not sure if this is best answered by you or Tom, but first of all, thanks, thanks to everybody who presented tonight. I appreciate the time put into this presentation. My question is, you know, we got, talked a little bit about putting 3.3 million aside from fund balance that we luckily haven't had to use yet. What's the status of that? And if we don't use that 3.3, since it's already been purposed, how would that play into the next budget cycle?
Mary, you want me to take it?
Please.
Thank you, Bill. The, so of the 3.3, the good news, like Mary had said, is that 2 million of that is going to be, is, is, we're hearing anyway, is going to be funded by the state. Now, this projection that you're seeing today, we only projected a quarter of that because they haven't yet approved that budget. But should it happen and should what we, what we're being told come to fruition, that full $2 million will, will, will become available. The 3.3 million dollars that was, that were appropriated and are available for use would be turned back to the town if we don't use it.
Yeah, any, Bill, any, any surplus, whether it's a revenue surplus or cost savings versus budget. At the end of the year, it gets closed out to fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just caution to just one thing. So this is a very preliminary forecast for me, you know, and I can guarantee. One, the one thing I can guarantee is the number that we see today won't be the number in June. You know, there'll be changes that happen throughout the year. This is very, very premature.
Yeah, and I underscore that. Thank you, John, for saying that on my side as well. It's just so fluid. The, the ground we're all working in is just so fluid and subject to change.
Yep. Okay, before I turn it over to Carrie Nee, if there are questions or comments from members of the school committee. I would just say to the public who have joined us that we will open the floor up to questions and comments from the public after members of the school committee and members of the advisory committee have had an opportunity to ask questions. So we thank you for your patience. Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you to everyone who presented tonight. At this time, I will take any questions from members of the school committee. If, I think, I can't see you all, so if you could just use the raise hand function. Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Bob Curley for questions and comments from members of the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mary. First, I'd like to thank the whole town team for getting us to this place in such a hard time. And I would welcome questions from any member of the advisory committee at this point. And I can't tell who is raising their hand or not. So I trust the host to.
If folks are having trouble finding the raise hand function, make sure you hit participants at the bottom. So the panel shows up on the right and then I think it should be over there.
I'm only seeing five people out of 80, Michelle, so.
Bob, I think.
I see Libby.
Libby, would you go ahead and pose your question? Thanks.
Yes, I have two quick questions. Kind of jumping off on what Joe was asking. I thought the total CARES reimbursements were 3.3, but I'm looking at the Q1 memo from Tom and Dr. Austin. And it looks like that's showing 3.6 of reimbursements. So are we, what is the total CARES potential reimbursements?
Thank you, Libby. Yeah, that was a change about, I don't know, a couple, a few weeks ago in that number and it up to 3.6.
So then that FEMA money for police and fire is part of what can be reimbursed?
No, that's a separate program. 25% of, of the funds that we would, of the, of the funds that we would be incurring through that, the FEMA work would be CARES Act eligible.
Okay, so that 3.6 in that memo coincides with what's available from the county. Okay.
That's right.
And then one other question I had, I don't know if, who, who to direct this to, I guess. I don't know if it's Michelle or Tom. But in looking at the Q1 financial analysis and looking at the respective tier one action plans. The, I mean, I, I followed pretty much everything that, that you showed in there. I think the only two things that are, I guess in general, is I wasn't seeing how the each, the municipal and the school tier one plans that are separate tabs roll up to that summary tab. Because, I mean, the capital piece, I'm just jumping over to the spreadsheet here. The capital piece, I see how that flows up from each department, but the, like on the municipal side and the school side. The, I'm looking at, on the Q1 financial summary, that, that column M, M 37 and M 38. I just don't see how those numbers tie from the respective tabs in that spreadsheet. If somebody could help me with that.
Michelle, this sounds like it's up your alley or maybe John's.
Yeah. So I would, I would just say, while Michelle's maybe looking on the town side, Libby, that if, if you look at the school, the school forecast was a $1.7 million budget shortfall. So we took the full year value. Because John was able to give a projection out for the full year. In, in the municipal number that you see, that is just the first quarter savings because we, we didn't look further out within the schools. Maybe Michelle wants to speak more directly to that one.
Is that, can I just ask, Mary, is that 1.7 that is like the 1694 that's reflected on there? Is that on the spreadsheet that John presented and not part of the documents that we received in advance of the meeting?
It was, it was on the forecast document that we got from the school department. The tier one action plan in the school department only showed first quarter. And the full year forecast that John walked through showed a 1, 1,694 shortfall. And that's what's reflected in the summary document.
Okay, great. So that explains it. I, I thought it was contained in documents we received, but apparently it wasn't, so.
Well, I think, I, I think you did receive that document. I think we all received four documents. And that, that was one of them, but happy to follow up with you after the meeting if, if it's helpful to just walk through them one by one.
Yeah, I think we received three documents, but, but I'll follow up with Bob. And then on the municipal side, I don't know if that's Michelle to answer that one.
Sure. So in column, it's too many cells.
I know.
In L 37, the municipal department.
Yeah, the M, the variance.
Year. Yeah, that variance. So what that reflects is the municipal department spending the full FY21 expenditure budget. And then it also, it includes the savings from the vacancies you see on the municipal tier action plan in the next tab. And it also reflects about 139,000 in CARES expenses that we expect to be reimbursed for. So between the 231,000 in savings from the vacancies, but then minus the 139,000 from the CARES expenditures, you get that variance of 92 to the good there.
Okay, yep, great. That makes sense. And I think maybe when I go back and look at the memo that was from Tom and Dr. Austin. I think that that may have showed that, and had a comment in there. I'm trying to jump back to that document on my computer. But I think it did say that those were not reflected in the, in the, yeah, I'm going down there on that, that document. Yeah, okay, page two, yeah, I think it says in the notes that they were not reflected yet in the Q1 analysis. Because you're still reviewing those. So, okay, thank you. Those were my only questions. Appreciate it.
I see a hand from Dave Anderson.
Dave, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Thanks, Bob. Just a quick question. If I understood John correctly, the, the big variance, the kind of north of a million dollar variance is just due to the net accounts of salary missing the, the full day K and kids in action tuition payments. I was just curious, given the absence of full day K tuition, are those, were there any savings associated with not running the program or were the resources for full day K reallocated into other needs?
On your muted, I'm, okay, go ahead if you want to.
Yeah, no, they were, they were reallocated, David, to other needs. They were, I mean, there's, you know, we, we need people. So, you know, there's, that's it. So there's no savings because we weren't running a full day program, not, not from full day K. Because those teachers were used for other purposes, for the extra hours.
Other questions from members of the advisory committee?
Bob, I'm not, I'm not seeing any other questions.
I'm not either, so I.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to open it up to questions and comments from the public. And if I could just please remind everybody, because, you know, the open meeting law, which, which we all have to follow. We are talking, the agenda item that we are talking about is, is the first quarter update of the fiscal. is, is the first quarter update of the fiscal year 21 financial management plan. So we would welcome questions and comments with respect to the information that you've just spoke, that you've just seen. Again, if, if recognized by the chair, could I please ask that you give your name and address for the record, and that you direct questions and comments to me? And as necessary, I will deflect, I will bring in other people to answer them. I'd like to recognize Heather Henderson.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for all the information. I'm directing my question, I guess, to Mary.
Ms. Henderson, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, Heather Henderson.
That's okay.
151 Hershey Street.
Thank you very much.
I'm, I have a couple of questions regarding the, the fund that you said we had as a town, which enabled us to not have to lay people off and do some of the, some of the measures, the cost saving measures that the other towns were forced to do.
Yes.
And I'm sure that there are some recommended minimums and maximums that are set, that are required or recommended that towns have for these types of funds. So can you let us know sort of what those minimums and maximums are for the town, and how much we have remaining in our fund?
Sure. And Heather, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna answer your question, and, and I'm hoping that the specific numbers I give you, I'm going off a little memory here, but Hingham has something called a fund balance. And the, our rainy day fund is what we call our unrestricted fund balance. And essentially, our financial policy, which the, which the advisory committee develops, and which actually everybody can find on the advisory committee page of the town website, says that for Hingham, we should have between 16 and 20% of one year's worth of expenses as our fund balance, as our rainy day fund. And, and so that's the level that we should have, and that's a level that our financial advisors and the rating agencies tell us is what's important for a AAA bond community. And, and having a fund balance is one of the factors that helps us keep our AAA bond rating. As of last June of 2019, which was the last fiscal year we closed, we actually had six, we had an additional $6.9 million up above the upper level of the threshold. So 20% was a certain amount of money. We had $6.9 million in surplus. And again, the advisory committee's financial, the advisory committee's financial policy lays out what we can and can't use that money for. And in general, the financial policy says that as a town, we, we, we would want to use our excess fund balance to fund kind of one-time things, like capital, like maybe a, you know, pay down of some of our retirement. And up until now, we have been, we haven't spent that excess fund balance, and there was some thought given to potentially using that to defray the cost of some of the large capital projects that are underway in the town, because we know we have a lot of them. So, so this past year, again, in conjunction with the advisory committee, we said, gee, we, we are gonna have a temporary revenue shortfall. We're gonna have one for '21. And there's also, I think, a question of whether the pandemic is going to affect next fiscal year's financials, and I think there's still a lot of uncertainty about that. So we said, we're gonna take 3.3 million in excess fund balance, and we're gonna use that to fill a temporary revenue hole for '21. And so if, if nothing else happened, the surplus fund balance would be, I'm doing the math in my head, I think it's about 3.6 million. And again, I would ask people, if you're interested in this, the advisory committee's financial policy on their website describes this fund balance and uses of fund balance probably more succinctly than I just have. But I hope that answers your question.
So we would still be, we would still have surplus left over for the next fiscal year?
The, the, again, all other things, all other things being equal, we would. And again, when we looked at this in May of this past year, one of the things that we understood is that the effect of COVID could extend into fiscal year '22.
Correct.
One, one thing we've heard from Representative Moschino and State Senator O'Connor is that the state budget picture looks a lot worse for '22 than it does for '21.
Right.
And again, it's, it's really too soon to tell, but I think, just as we saw in '21, we didn't have to take some drastic measures that other communities did because of our fund balance. And as we, as we look ahead to '22, that will be one of many factors that we would look at.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'd like to recognize David, whoop, okay, there was a hand up, and now the hand is gone.
That's my fault, I tried to click on Heather, so let me get him.
Okay. Is that Mr., Mr. Bolu? And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Yeah, no, no worries, it's a, it's a mouthful. Dave Bollier, 18 Mast Hill. My question is related to the CARES Act funding and the, the, the funds that I guess remain outstanding or remain unused. Considering space is such an issue on the, on the school system, have we looked into acquiring temporary space, whether that be in tent form or mobile units or something like that, that can provide some, some additional space outside of the buildings yet still protected and perhaps even heated with tables or things like that?
Yeah, Mr. Bollier, I'll turn it over to Dr. Austin, but one of the things that we're looking at, that the school department is looking at is St. Jerome's. And certainly, if the town were to enter into an agreement, any expenses we would incur through the end of the year with respect to St. Jerome's would be, would be COVID, COVID reimbursement eligible. The big question is, what happens after January 1? But I think it's the feeling of the town, and, and we make that St. Jerome's decision together. It's, it's the right thing to do for the town, even if that means the town has to absorb some costs. Dr. Austin, I'll maybe hand it over to you to, to give a more complete answer.
Thank you, you did a great job. I'm just gonna have you answer from now on, Mary, that's fine. You know, I, I think that's very true. You know, we looked at all of those issues and considered outside tent spaces, portable units, et cetera, and what we, what we really came up with from the school side is that temporary use of shelter was not necessarily good academic or, or teaching space. And so we looked for a, a better solution to that, and that's how we came up with the St. Jerome's. We are headlong into St. Jerome's, we are in negotiations with them, and so that will be included in the COVID reimbursements that we will try to do, as well as any of those things such as technology we need to put in there to update, to make sure that all of our students have what they need. So we are ready to, to move forward with that. And along with that, too, is some of the things that we haven't talked about, more furniture, et cetera, if we need to buy furniture, we're preparing for that. So we're not done necessarily spending even in this quarter for, until the 31st of December as we prepare for that. But we are, we're working hard to get that all done by December 31st, so we ensure that we get those reimbursables.
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, for people on this call, if you're so inclined, I think every municipality in Massachusetts and, and really all over the country is in the same boat that we are, which is that when this, when this CARES Act money, you know, expires on December 30th, you know, we're all kind of in the lurch. And, you know, we're, we're hearing that there's discussions in Washington, and, you know, maybe it's starting, maybe it's not. Municipalities like Hingham are gonna see real financial impact if, 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 if nothing is done. And we know that the, that we are going to be incurring costs relative to COVID-19 well into 2021. So, you know, we are lobbying Plymouth County, we are lobbying our state legislatures, we're lobbying our representatives and our senators, and, and we know, we know other municipalities are, are in a similar situation, but, you know, it's, it's, it's serious stuff, it's serious stuff. I, I would also say that as we're in discussions about what we're doing between now, you know, St. Jerome's is a really good example, the bulk of the cost for St. Jerome's will probably hit in calendar year '21. And we don't know if we're gonna get reimbursed, but we have to do it anyway, because we have to get that space, and that space gives us options. And if that means we as a town have to absorb it, you know, we talked in early October at the school department planning meeting and basically said, it's a no-brainer to go ahead. And, and I think what, what all of you can count on is that you're, is that, is that all of us as staff and elected and appointed people, we're gonna try to do what's best for the town of Hingham, and we're not gonna wait till there's a federal program, the next one coming, because we can't wait. We're gonna do what we need to do as a community, you know, until that happens. Libby? Libby Lewicki, I see, so there's two Libbys on the line, this is a first, but Libby Lewicki's hand was up first, so Libby Lewicki?
Thank you so much, I'm Libby Lewicki, 370 Gardener Street, thank you so much for taking my question, and I'm speaking as a resident of the town, and I just wanted to say that we've been looking at a lot of numbers tonight, and we're talking about the financial situation and all that, and what it doesn't take into account is the emotional toll that all of this has taken on all of the residents of Hingham, and that we are all going, we have to dig deep in, in the future financially speaking. And we need to be prepared for that. So there's all this talk about holding back on financial spending and all that, but as far as mitigating the emotional toll that's taken place in the town, I, I, I just feel like next year is going to be, be a big deal, and we need to be prepared for that, and that's what we're all, we need to be thinking about as we review the numbers that are presented to us today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Libby Claypool?
Am I unmuted? I was gonna say, I didn't think I raised my hand yet. Anyway, I did realize, and so I apologize, that fourth document was attached to our email, but I would just ask, Mary, if we could just check with the school department on that, because when I look at that document, which is the HPS forecast snapshot, I get, the bottom line they're showing is 305,000 deficit, and I get 122.
Okay. Yeah, Libby, thank you. And, you know, I think with, with, if, if we could take that offline, just because we do have 74 people on the line, and...
Sure.
I, I don't, I don't want to put anybody on the spot to reconcile numbers with 74 people on the line, mostly me.
No problem.
No, thank you, thank you. Anyone else with a question or a comment about this FY21 financial plan? Okay, I think, I think that actually concludes our business for tonight. I'm gonna, Carrie, would you like to adjourn the school committee first?
Yep, I will take a motion to adjourn the school committee at 9:25 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Michelle, do we have a second?
Nobody wants to leave.
I'll second, I'll second. Thank you, Jen. And we'll go, roll, roll call vote, Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Libby Lewicki?
Aye.
And Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, thank you.
Thank you, good night, good night. Thank you, Paul, thank you, John. Bob, would you like to adjourn the advisory committee?
I, I would like to adjourn the advisory committee, but we're going into recess because we still have some agenda items that are left over from our, from our previously convened meeting. So it's, we're all glad to join you, and we'll go into recess and reconvene in our other meeting.
Well, thanks for, thanks for joining us, and hopefully you'll conclude the rest of your business in, in short order. Bob, you don't need to do a roll call?
I don't think to go into recess, we do.
I, I don't think so either, but, okay, nobody's stopping us, so, okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much again. I would take a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen meeting.
I'm moved.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.